Do you know why the drastic change up in 2017 was a blue? Okay, let's go to 2018 even, it was 1600 and then uh.
Yeah, I didn't have time to look into those exact details.
Okay.
And they will probably be like in the basement to pull what exactly those deposit. But I mean.
It's fine three now, there's no fines can be applied.
Good evening, everyone.
And that's a fund account, that's not general fund, it's a special revenue fund. So it doesn't have any issue with general funds.
Oh, it stays in the library account.
It's like a revolving type of account.
We'll call the March 28th, 2024 Finance Committee meeting to order. And the listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which needs to be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Does your number select?
Um, I'd like to call to order on the selecting portion of this meeting. It's March 28th, um, we are at prime time, um, this meeting is being recorded, can I take a role?
So, good evening, Leonard Hall is present?
Nicole Melo, present.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, equal rights and liberty in the essence of all.
A little out of order today, now we start with the assessors. 140 won.
Okay, so um, so let's just go out, went through what my budget told us about. So um, we level funded um, our board members, the chairman and the two members, nothing changed from last year. Physical assessor, um, it was increased by two and a half percent. Um, on that line, you also see contract negotiation, realtor fee, that should be crossed out. Originally, everything was combined into one line, so we split it between um, that line and the line. It's a new line for this year coming. So education stipend and um, my contract, it's going to be renegotiated on the end of June. But um, in my current contract, um, I need to, we agreed that I would have my real estate license um, active and so we can access MLS because that's what we use for our sales. So um, I wanted to see if I could negotiate that, those fees into um, the contract coming up. So I know I had to put in anything, what I wanted to add. Okay, so um, the assistant assessor, um, increased the same from the union contract. The clerk, we're um, looking to get um, a clerk in there ASAP. So this would be um, the salary for the person. For um, now and FY, well, it shows us the hourly amounts for both. Uh, over time, we kept it at um, $500, same as last year. Professional and technical, which would be um, classes for um, my office and also any board members, um, remain the same. Um, map updates, there was increase in the annual cost. And also with this being our five-year recertification, um, the DOR, look, they like you to smash things up. So they, she said that um, I priced out how much it would cost to have our neighborhood. They want neighborhood codes and colored in and our pencil that we used the last five years ago weren't good anymore. So they want us to go digital, we have digital, the GIS maps, but they want the neighborhoods to be coded different colors. So um, I priced that out, but I'm not sure if we'll need to do it, so I just have it in here, just in case. So I talked to her again, I'll see if I can.
And what part of that was the color coding?
Um, the $1800.
Okay.
Uh, it's uh, it would be another overlay on our GIS maps. So it'd be a one-time 1800. Next line, um, I increased it by 2000 because of our um, recertification. There's going to be a lot more work that needs to be put in from our consultant. So um, that's where the 2000 there comes from. 8000 remained the same for um, appraisals. Opposite sides remain the same. Um, any mileage, professional development was 800, remain the same. And our dues and subscriptions to our local and our state uh, organization, revenue is the same.
What is the wireless cable valuation, $2000? Is that specific to this department or is that a wireless cable?
That is.
Subscription for the, for the town?
No, it will, it is the consultant we use to value it. They have it broken out by the wireless, well, it is, they do the 504 public utilities appraisal and the wireless cable valuation, so it breaks it out on, I don't know if you have that.
We do.
Yes.
So it's from um, RRC, that's the company we use to do personal property. That's the, that's how much they get paid to do with those, the wireless.
So their evaluation comes to the town, not to the state?
Correct.
And then the town always does it?
Yes.
Um, so it's in his uh, in their um, computer programming or whatever, they don't have the color coded?
No. Nope.
Do you use drones or do they use drones to do the evaluations?
Um, we have the near map, they don't, they actually go into every, they get the list of every business and they, oh, you know what I mean, like, sorry. They do our personal property, so they, that's why they're, they've increased also because they have a lot more places. They have to go into everything this, for this five years, where normally they probably just go into, you know, they probably break it up between, you know, 400 say, you know, a year, but um, they have to go into everything.
The wireless.
They, it's a certain, it's a, they have their own method on how they do it. Use, the state used to do it, but then they stopped. So now, RRC, we pay them to do what the state did. So it's like their own method, it's like a packet for each.
So what I'm hearing is there are two state mandates. You could request to the town and know the endorsement from the state.
So I'm a little confused, this map, what is this map business? The computer science element or what is this?
It is what we use our GIS maps, um, that we already have.
Okay.
So we pay, um, we update them yearly, so there's a fee and uh, like a maintenance fee and a user fee, it's the two fees.
So, you have to pay an update every year, right?
Yeah, so when we have new um, splits, combines, everything that we get, anything new happening, we send all that information off.
And what is the interim valuation? What is that?
Interim is the years in between the um, the five-year recertification.
Oh, oh.
So every year is in, it's in between the recertification.
So if there's no changes year to year, which isn't very likely, right?
Right.
People buy houses, have to change ownership. And the wireless economy appraisal, can you explain that, explain that again, what is that?
Um, that is a report that comes from the people that do our personal property. They have a way of, they get the formalist and they're inventory. And they can, they do something with it and we get our report back of what the values are from them. I don't really know behind, if I could do it, I would, but I don't really know.
But shouldn't you know, I mean, I'm not trying to be critical, but shouldn't you know what all these elements are in some detail?
I know what they are, I just don't know how they get, how they compile that information that I give them.
So if you were to find out, suppose somebody um, not me, but somebody pinned you down for more details, would you be able to find those details also?
Yeah, I could.
Okay.
Reach out and, and get the information, if there's something I don't know, I, that's how I go about getting back to the person with the information.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Guessing that uh, our real estate research consultants, that's, there's probably not too many people on state that do that.
The person, um, we've been using has a computer for over 30 years, so. And does all the surrounding, Somerset, Seacombe, Tonn, no, not Tonn, Berkeley, so.
For 30 years, that's when they retired?
I don't know, I didn't hear from him this week and I said, oh my god, they're still alive. I am, he said, and I said, okay.
You mentioned clerk, Ray Manning, you don't have a clerk for that?
Um, we have a candidate, we're just um, working on the recommendation that went in our order.
I guess the only question I've got in regards to the education stipend, part of it being the MLS fees. Is that a part of the stipend as opposed to professional and technical, just because it's related to our license?
So I'm going to create a line for everybody with, to take out um, the education stipend. So the 800 is already in her contract. And then because she was wanting to negotiate more that has to do with education, I put it in that line.
Okay.
Um, but I could easily, I mean, it's a bottom line budget in the end, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We need 26, if we need to rearrange that, we could.
Will in this budget, are the fees for the assessors to upgrade their certification? Aren't they required to take courses and?
Um, the board members?
Yes, board.
No, they only have to take the 101, that's the only required course. And they all have taken it or they wouldn't be able to sign off on the tax rate and all that information on, on Gateway, so they're all up to date.
And there's no fees involved?
No.
We just.
It's a free course.
We get a sign on at the DOR and at our own pace. We do, the course 101 is actually 10 modules. Right. And so you do each module, uh, if you don't want to take them in order. Okay, thank you.
One more question on that, so you said you didn't answer, you said they could, you can do the modules at your own pace. Is there a timeframe, if you have to have your certification within your first year on the committee or?
The term certification is really not applicable to the elected officials. We are required of the 10 modules, there are two that must be completed before we set the tax rate. So um, after the, let's say after the fall town meeting, all assessors, the new assessors should have already completed those two courses or they can't participate. When you talk certification as an assessor, you're talking somebody that probably does this for a living and a man that helps us. That's what he does, uh, and he's our, we call him our ta- our tax expert, whatever comes up. He's the one that answers the questions. To actually become a fully certified assessor, it takes a long time. And if you're an elected official in office for three years, doesn't make much sense to go through that because there's no guarantee you're going to be elected again. And but, but, so this gentleman is, is certified and is a professional. So um, you are, you, so you must complete two modules in order to participate in setting the tax rate. You have two years from the date of your election to complete the whole module.
Okay, and how many members on the meeting on that board?
Three.
Thank you, you are welcome.
You have any questions for the assessors?
Do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Need someone?
No, no. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've said before, and it's, there's no difference this year, you guys are one of the most intimidating committees I uh, face here. It's, as you are, they're not some boss in the town and a lot of people don't realize what you guys do, we thank you for that. Uh, stormwater, the drastic change in your city, um, on the full timeline, it's reflecting some work anticipated to be done on Main Street project. That's the full times carried over. Also, in parallel with 422 on the office manager, uh, there's a completion on that wage study that was done. Plus the long debris is considered, as we just reflected there, we changed the hours a little bit. So both the full timeline and the office manager line, they coincide with the 422. So you add them up and that comes up the annual salary. Further down, equipment maintenance and repair, we, obviously we need to bump that up a little bit. And then the other drastic change is on contractual disposal. We haven't done it yet, we've been very neglected, uh, we are moving forward with our stormwater issues. Uh, some of them are developments that have the underground uh, systems, they require vacuum service, truck, gas truck. We haven't done yet, they should be done annually, so we'd like to kickstart them and approach in that under control. Before it comes, it's very costly. So that takes care of 423.
So that's something you gotta contract out together?
Yes.
We got any stormwater? Are there any income generating streams to the developers? That want to go through the process or is that just simply through the permitting process?
In town, that, that's, we only get the money permits. As far as receipts, revenue into the town.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's just unpermitting process.
And how do our permits compare to other communities? Higher, lower?
I, I, I don't, I can't find that out.
You know, we're, we're spending time here talking about closing a deficit of 250,000. We're talking about cuts in budgets.
So you could be.
At some point, talking about generating revenue.
So it could be two stormwork permits this year, it could be zero. It, it's not a high volume.
Okay.
So would you like me to canvas the communities on the stormwater permit period?
Yes. Money's money. And it not always come out of the tax pass pocket.
That's why we're looking for those libraries.
Supplies and uh, and, and details, is that something that's most, mostly spent in the spring?
Uh, the details is anticipated with work into project, uh, Main Street project, and that's a known number. You, you never know, at, anytime you work on it, you have to have a detail.
Yeah.
So at Main Street, at, at this point, we could potentially be working eight weeks. Could be more and also details on following up with storm, 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 stormwater related storms.
And supplies wise, would that be something that you spend mostly in the spring?
Yes. Sometimes we could use that to make some small drainage upgrades as needed. That, that's a number that you don't know until after you, you're cleaning the basins, which we're starting now. And identify some problems that have to be done, like barrels and also the sand.
Yeah.
That would be something we need to address, either with a warrant article or having enough in this year, the tax, and we'd be doing that.
This contractual disposal, so um, you're looking for the increase, but we've only used 21%. Is that fair weather?
That's a my typical thing, which just done, yes. Uh, was, was the silence of the question?
Yeah, the stormwater side of things, professional and technical, what's going to happen?
So, say we have a problem with some sand, I will pick on that one.
Yes.
Uh, they may be, may be a need unforeseen for engineering services.
Okay.
A lot of times I can fix things in kind, but sometimes you need engineering services. And you need the engineering services upfront to, so you can have a sense of direction, where to go for funding.
Any questions on 432? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought of something. Um, Mike, the contract we have with Weston and Sampson for engineering services?
Yes.
So when they're doing a review for us, obviously the owner of the project pays for the review.
Yes.
So will highway department or stormwater be able to use Weston and Sampson if we need in-house engineering? Is it included in the, the agreement we have?
Not right now, the on-call peer review, uh, in the on, uh, in the on-call peer review is just for on-call peer review right now.
Okay.
We need to work on that.
Okay, so if, uh, just verify that a particular road in town is going to have some repairs, but an engineer has to get involved.
Yeah, we just went through a separate process in the fraud for those engineers as well.
Yep.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, we do, uh, we do, uh, we do have a slate of those engineers already on contract that are different from the Weston Sampson peer review.
Okay, thank you.
Great, very good job.
Done.
Thank you.
Unless you want to go right to highway now.
That was one of those, that was.
Uh, 422?
Okay.
Thank you for changing the schedule around.
Thank you.
Uh, first, first question for your panel. Uh, you guys have any issues, can I suppose, bend this through or?
Uh, the actual case is that the, this cement part, especially with the blocks, seem to be an issue. It's just on the arriving pieces, but not the complete bases. It's a very limited source at this time.
Got it, right?
That's not an issue, that's, that's sourced up. So 422 similar with the, the 432, uh, on personnel, that's including myself, full time. And office manager, both split between the budgets. And the office manager, that reflects this after the investigation with the, the wage study. And no long debris, uh, the other line that's new to us. You sent a stipend, that would work into that, the full timers salary before. To be clear, if um, our accountant wanted to show that separately, so we can follow that. And that makes sense, that's why you see that new number there. Down in the 70s lines, um, last year, because it is zero base and we don't know what we need to rent, um, you never know. So I do anticipate rentals this year, so the 5000 would definitely be a good start. We should be covering that, to replenish that line, that's usually what we had in the past. Traffic control. Public void climb, that increase here reflects the contract, anticipated cost with the contract for the line changing with those outlines across the town. That's true, that's uh, jumps, put it that, and that's bid it out through systems. Uh, they spin and change in industry and a type of paints too, so that's limited, normal oil base, stuff like that. Uh, down the bottom, replacement equipment, that reflects both my office manager, um, computer system, that one's quite integrated. And the one in the back room for the, the laptop system for the mechanic, now we can't even, we can't even update, uh, emails, we can't even receive email. So that's replaced two units on electronics, and I believe Mr. Melon has the, the note there for electronic issues, along with that thing.
Question, uh, DR mechanic tanks, so is that a new line?
I missed that, yes it is, yes. So, DI has a, a program, I, I'm sure Mike will interrupt if I do it wrong, I hope he does. So they have a program similar to BPs and whatnot, but it, because of the type of program, uh, the kids are required to be paid. It's, it's not parallel with like BP and whatnot. Um, so we need to have, add the availability to do that. And it's not just during school season, it'll just be for one or two kids and it can be throughout the calendar year. And that's what that's reflecting, non, non-benefit.
Does the program at that high school, uh, are they like half, half school, half job experience on the job?
Yes, yes. They can't leave the school until 10:30 and I think every other week they have to go back for the full week, it's, it's a little complicated. But uh, it gives them basically a resume when they, when it's done. And they don't, they have to qualify to make it out. They uh, like this year, they really don't recommend the senior, they don't jump down to the juniors.
Okay, um, and what's the pay rate?
That's to be determined at this point.
So you're looking for two student placements, you said? Your whole way?
Five, one at a time, and these kids will do everything, that's just mechanical stuff, everything. Everything that we do except for operating the heavy equipment and driving.
Yes.
Yes.
So they, they come down to the garage?
Yes, they, they transport themselves.
Just prevailing wage apply?
Prevailing, no. No, the, they should be at will by time.
Yeah, yeah, like.
Prevailing wage.
I think we needed the calculation, we did it at minimum wage, a certain amount, I can look to see exactly.
Yeah, but prevailing wage, I don't believe there's.
No, I don't know, so.
Does it apply?
I, I wouldn't taste of it, there's no experience, we've given them experience. I, I'd rather do it the other way, they can't come unless they accept their offer.
Okay.
Okay. It's not, it's not a contract, it's.
No, uh, well, it's extremely with the, the school system, yes.
But not with the individual student, the student shows up and.
It's actually an interview process, they want to go through the whole thing, really. It's actually an interview process, they want to go through the whole thing, the experience, yes.
No, no issues insurance wise?
We would need to let out a term so that does affect employment counts, especially with regards to workers' compensation. And so that, so that would impact our census, that we have to accomplish what works.
It wouldn't matter that driving from school to the garage?
Probably not, I would imagine once they're actually on a property.
That's a good, very good question, yeah, they got home with their insurance.
Yeah.
Everybody's got a guide for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be a requirement too, that they have to be able to get themselves to.
Correct.
Let's walk in. Nine fifty-five thirty says increased with chlorinated rubber.
Thanks for.
Yes, the chlorine rubber, that is the lines with the center.
Oh, the one, yes. That's how last long you can hold stuff?
No.
And we have to use it.
Or you can use the more expensive stuff, the epoxy's.
So the old stuff was cheaper, lasts longer, but was bad for the environment.
Correct.
Now I understand.
This one's a preferred, probably isn't always one manufacturer in the country.
Wow, and he wrote the law.
Which aren't Texas.
How were, I know through six months, vehicle supplies, assuming that's a heavy maintenance time.
You're looking at the percentage used?
Yeah. That's something you do more in when you get to the right there.
Either or, and also they run parallel with equipment repair lines, if you notice, it should be in a negative. We're in negative in equipment repair, so the expenses are run parallel. It's very hard to separate that when the bills fly in, you know, just oil filters. Because sometimes you give it a benefit of inest why you're repairing something else.
Yeah, so then it just gets.
Right, it's, the bill gets paid.
One more, traffic control.
Yep.
What was the big increase there for twenty twenty four? Traffic control, we went from actual expenditure in twenty-three of about twelve fifty. And then in actual expenditure, almost, oh, it's definitely almost tripled.
So along with the paint problem, there is painting that we can do. The stop line, crosswalks, and parking lots, which our machine has broke. Now you probably see our articles that were done with that. Instead of farming that all out.
Oh, so the big increase is the machine?
Will, to buy, no, to buy the paint. And we will be entertained by the machine, it's to be determined.
Yeah, that's actually proposed in fifty-eight.
No, took that out, and that's where we put the fifty-eight seventy, we replaced that with the computers. Because the foot dollar value was over the five thousand. Yeah, that would come and yell at me on that one.
She yelled, really?
Oh yeah.
She doesn't come and yell.
I haven't heard her yell.
So strongly.
So the rates was.
So it should be determined on the funding for the machine, whether it's an auto transfer or, who knows, maybe it could be entertaining, you know, and transfer also. Because it's, I believe it's around eight thousand and change.
Excuse us.
Now can we put the.
One more question, Tom. How, just equipment wise, how is, I know we tried to replace some of the stuff that's right away. How's the rest of the equipment?
Still going backwards. The annual application that we've been doing with the fluid films seems to be arresting a lot of the rack. We still have a very agent fleet outside the rack. I definitely, the capital bay is working on a plan, if I read your plan. I suggest, I encourage you to support whatever they come up with. There should be at least a vehicle and then a piece of equipment for this year. The weight is going to be compound a problem moving forward.
So that would lead to another question, have you been involved in the capital out like we're assuming? Is it still active and are you?
I believe it's not yet this year, I gave them all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In planning for the annual time reading, we wanted to get your first sheet with a free cash number. We wanted to see and confirm where we are operationally.
But they have all information
Yes.
On the, each vehicle, the stats of each vehicle, they have all that information.
Okay, good.
So they will meet before down.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Any questions?
Which, which, along with the truck, fingers crossed, we funded a truck last year.
Yeah.
Mexico is the holdup on rails, the chassis, we got a phone call a few days ago, it might be built in April. But than that, they didn't know, which brings up a point, we, that might, kind of, do we have to entertain if it's not ready?
The article?
Yeah, if it's not ready this year, do we have to revoke that?
No, I typically carry it for three years, but with that, if we need to carry it a little bit longer till we actually get it, that's fine.
Which doesn't affect your original question about how we're going to do it now. Thank you.
Any questions on that, Ivan? Just while we're on that topic and on the committee that would be coming up, we would need to supply someone, right? This, so just something to keep in mind that we're going to put something on that committee.
Yeah, just related to crap, and we really wanted to get through with this introductory process in terms of just laying out where we are. What had been proposed for FY twenty-five operation, but obviously we have additional work to do. However, internally, like a lot of the work to get here has been dominating our efforts. Like, now that we have a better picture, I get our confirmed picture where we are and what we need to do. We can help turn attention at the same time to funding for capital as well.
What you want to hear? Sure.
Just a little bit, I put it over.
Thanks, Laura.
Got an audio that way? Sorry. I just saw.
It's up today, Tom, do you know where we are?
Exactly, no, but that's your concern it does.
So we are negative eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Sixty-seven, and we're not going to have any more storms, sorry, Tom.
Snow, no.
Snow, no.
I'm sorry, could I have that number one more time? Eighty-seven thousand?
Yep.
Three hundred and sixty-seven.
Thank you.
And you heard him, no more snow.
We're negative.
Snow, snow and ice is the one, one place you can go over.
Legally.
We keep it at fifty thousand, so it doesn't affect your tax levy.
If we raise it, then we've got to keep it at that rate.
Yes, I think, wait, stay out, it's still working, works well, I mean, this pretends to mean this is a hot discussion, some of them fund their budgets for five hundred thousand dollars. And they're wondering why they have some other issues. Right, so commitments inside the town, so this is definitely working.
Any questions on that, or why they had statement at the fifty?
No.
No, we're going to get killed soon. It's kind of too easy.
Yes.
Forestry, Tom?
Forestry. That was easy.
Yeah.
So forestry has a tree warden and pest control, wait, now. Historically, that was legalist Jack Crawford, the Forest Forestry Program. We've been active for a program going on now, so it's great in that, company's forestry line.
Is that just a stipend, Tom?
The tree wardens elected?
Elected, okay.
And pest control, they should be zero to that. It's not, and I can't see.
Any questions on?
No.
Is that the end for you?
No.
Nope.
Couldn't just have a night of.
Four two nine, four three five.
Two nine, four three five.
Easy, it's a small one. That's mainly just diverting bridge. So it's a dollar bay to repair problems that we have once in a while, and also pay for electric which is still, so I mean, there's nothing hit.
It's not, I will talk to the citizens on this.
What was that, Tom?
So it gives us availability to maintain a very bridge, both electrical, oil, electrician.
Okay, that's pretty much what that.
Yeah, that's all, that's all, yes.
They said it was not being lit?
No, the electrical bill is not hitting this.
Oh.
Yeah, it's an internal thing that me and Serena.
So through March, two hundred and thirty-three dollars has been expensed for the energy.
Through March?
Yes.
That's the same as through December.
Oh, so we think since then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is.
I'll look into that.
It's not millions of dollars, but it's like Mr. Hull, I think we'll get.
Any questions on that bridge?
No.
What was the last one, Tom?
Four three five.
Three five.
Transfer station. So that's, as you know, restructuring, this was part of the white health, this is part of that restructure. Now this is still going to move around a little bit. About the salary line should be reflected in the actual, the present tenant didn't start it earlier first. So and the current rate with the two percent consideration, it should hit that correctly. The overtime line, I believe at this time shouldn't be made where it is. Because that will cover our guys if we have to cover that. And if you walk away or whatever, that gets a high decision filled, so it would be a long term. The rental, it's safe to say we can, the rental, that number can change sooner. That should be zero out.
Okay.
For budgeting purposes. We're in the process of, with a grant, the rental is for a container for the mattresses. That grant is providing a container.
Container was ordered this week.
Recyclables is a weird nobody hit. There's still no end use, it's still a mountain growing somewhere up. And you still need to dispose of it. That's kind, that should reflect contractual with the tonnage on the history of the tonnage that we have. The office supplies and. Office supplies and our model stickers, that correct, yes, even though there's a reduction in office supplies, because my office is assuming some of it. That should cover to be leading necessarily, that's definitely enough, that reduction is fine. And seven seven five, that's pretty much what the stickers costing you. Anticipated that percentage going, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Transfer station, it's a revenue generating facility, correct? It generates income?
Yes.
What happens to that income? And is, how is it reflected in this budget?
It's, it's not reflected as an enterprise at this time.
To the, to the general.
Okay, so where does the money go?
I'd like to know.
Yeah, this is one of the things, this is one of the things that the solid waste, the, oh, one of the initiatives and important initiatives that the solid solid waste committee has been working on, that revenue line. A total wind trash bag is, is in FY twenty-four, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, based on, based on the volume issues and also the revenues. From the transfer station specifically that aren't actually keeping up with expenses. We've already noticed that based on this year's trend at the transfer station. Oh, those revenues are not actually keeping up with FY twenty-four projections. So in FY twenty-five, just out of the gate, we are projecting and are proposing to draw back on those revenue projections by twenty grand. Twenty grand at this point. However, over the next few weeks, at the same time, the solid waste committee will be looking at and addressing the issues. Because we have to have, we have to have revenue, we have to have an expense and revenue structure that really hopefully gets way closer to actually paying for itself. We don't have that now. And especially given that fiscal position, we really need to continue working. If we see that those revenues are not actually keeping up with expenses. We, as a town, we need to, we need to do a better job, in my opinion, to match them. And so even though we're recommending now, I go March twenty-eighth to, to, yeah, like we're recommending projections that have a twenty thousand dollar drawback from where we are in twenty-four. That has a very real, hopefully the very real possibility of changing as we, oh yeah, like as we go further in the budget, which and if we do it right, and have actually buy-in as part of the, as part of the process as well. We should be able to hopefully close a little more of our budget gap as well.
So it's, it's, it goes to general.
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Is that just a matter of the mix of things that's going into the station?
It's a whole host of things, it's included, it's included, like it's included really the mix. One of the challenges generally that we have now is we allow trailer loads of, trailer loads of, oh yeah, like a bulky debris to be brought in. And those trailer loads are very, oh yeah, like rather than, you know, like what we, what we cost and what we quantify for bringing in a TV, a washing machine, when people bring trailer loads in, it's harder to quantify exactly what to charge. And then also what actually hits us on the backend as an expense. That is one of the, I, if I had to predict, that's one of the areas that the solid waste committee will probably be, oh, really looking at. Do we have, with everything happening, with our financial position, what it is, do we have the ability to keep doing that at this point?
We're just telling them to go, go down the road.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, I mean, like if people of residents are gonna have a home renovations project, you know, like get oh yeah, like have, you know, one of those bag programs. Yeah, like, oh yeah, what those big bags are called, where you throw everything in and then it's picked up. Like if it's a bigger project, you know, rental project or whatever, people can get dumpstered. But yeah, like, I mean, like for like a very small, for very small percentage of town residents who are, who are actually doing the trailer load process on a regular basis, you know, to have the town budget really continue to subsidize what, like I believe is a very small, a small amount of people, it's really having a profound impact on our budget and our expenses.
So we do recyclables at the transfer station, there is a dumpster for metals. Do we do heavy metal recycling, like metal, you can make money off your metal?
Oh, we do, the metal that's dropped off, we do make an income.
Thank you.
There's also, and it's a feature also, there's also a fee for that pull up and move. Which hurts me a little bit. Yes.
What's the road track?
Go ahead.
So the money comes in, it goes into the general fund. And then it is used to pay bills, I would imagine. Eventually coming out on the end of free cash. Is that?
Hope, hopefully, the revenues that actually go into the general fund are the revenues that are used to really fund, if we're lucky. Those are the revenues that are used to fund the expenses. But however, where we are now, those revenues don't come close to funding the expenses.
So the budget, the budget projects a certain amount in the general fund, the revenue coming in.
As revenue.
So if we, if we don't hit that, then it's got to come from somewhere else. But if we go over, if we were to go over, then it would be excess for.
Thank you, that was a. Thank you, I, that was a bad idea.
Yeah, I can tell you that has not happened anyways. Uh, there's a question, Mr. Chin.
Sorry, um, it says the expenses is a hundred and eight thousand, but did you just say the revenue bracket was over two hundred thousand? Did I miss that?
The, uh, the revenue, oh, yeah, the, the total solid waste revenues as a whole, like bags, transfer station, everything as a whole, is two hundred and ninety thousand in FY twenty-four.
Thank you.
However, just to put in the context, our entire solid waste budget is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Just a little bit of a gap.
Yeah.
Just a little.
Uh, just a general question in regard to the hazardous material. I know a lot of times in the spring, we have a hazardous material day or, no, not on plan today for this year.
No.
Shaking his head no, so.
No, it's not every year.
Not every.
No, it's entertained every three or four years. Makes no sense of a need for it at this time. And good education, you wouldn't need it at all. So that's, that's one thing we're learning, we need to do, you know, we always should be doing that day education part to help consumers before they need to purchase.
Any other questions on four thirty-five?
I have a general question, if it's all right.
Jake.
Yeah, yeah, last year, when we talked about, um, budgeting additional hours for the transfer station, to have it open longer, hoping that would drive more traffic and revenue, what was the impact of that? Did, you know, did that become a positive change overall from last year? Or did it, you know, main even, or, you know, was that a, a money loser for us for those additional hours?
That's a very good question, um, we're still learning those numbers. And I guess it depends on what you're looking for on that question. Uh, we also moved the day, so now it's Friday Saturdays that are Tuesday Saturday or Wednesday Saturday. Um, this Friday Saturday seems to be the most popular amendable, uh, customer friendly arrangement. And, uh, you, you need to go through the calendar year at least once to get a, a sense of where that question's going. And you really need to look at a few years to see where that's going. But it, it seems to be more customer friendly to Friday Saturday.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, that's all I was asking, really, I, I didn't expect you to have, you know, fast analysis of that. I just, we had changed hours and our hope was that that was gonna drive additional traffic and revenue. It sounds like it's become more popular, which is great.
Thank you.
It was all set on. Is that it for you?
I don't know. I'll make sure.
I have a feeling we'll be talking to you again.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, just, uh, just, uh, just, uh, just suggesting, Mr. Chin, Mr. Woodrow is here and he has a very small budget, the one seventy-nine.
It's seventy-nine, it's.
One eighty-nine. The industrial and the bone marrow?
No, agricultural, commercial, border.
Oh, yeah, agricultural, one seven-nine.
And we can just move on to the border.
Um, I've got a question and I apologize to finance committee. I should have met with, I've got two questions that I need to talk with the town administrator on, on resolving on, on the budget as far as budgeting to the garden. So at this moment, I am not prepared to submit my budget. So if I wanna get ahold of Mike sometime next week.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's a.
There's a couple of things to change and I understand that the town is, we're in some financial situation, we're in a financial situation. So if you can cut, cut our budget, we're willing to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodrow.
Thank you.
All right, I'll follow up with you too.
Hey, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen.
Sewer.
Sewer.
Good night, thank you.
This is Woody. Department six hundred. Thank you.
Sorry, I can't be there in person, but I got a little bit of a cold and I don't wanna spread this stuff around.
Thank you.
But I'm prepared to move forward and get this done as quick as possible.
Any, any big projects, Woody?
No, everything's pretty good here.
It's, uh, second left, Pete. It's, uh, it's out of order because it's, uh.
You know, I'd just like everybody to know that everything's running real well in the sewer department. And, and most people don't even realize or recognize who any of our employees are because you never really see them, you know, they're in the sewer. And, and I mean that literally, I mean, we have six pump stations in town and, and they have to be checked every day and we have an outstanding staff. Um, that I, I don't see them myselfs either, I just sign their payroll. But there are no problems, um, major problems. Um, we have a great superintendent, Harold Grecier, and, and our staff in the sewer department runs flawlessly. So I commend everybody, um, that worked for the department.
So, just so, you guys know the, the sewer department, the way the fund works is they may generate their revenue from, um, usage fees. Um, that's, that's basically it, right? Woody, you guys are all funded by usage fees?
Yeah, we're all funded by usage fees and we do have a, a annual capital expense. And you'll see it's reduced from a hundred and fifty thousand to fifty thousand. Um, and, and I think Mike Mullin can probably explain that a little better than me. Um, you know, we're expecting some money from ABRA funds and, and, you know, I spoke with the office manager about this line and she said that she's been in contact with Mike about this, so. That's really the only thing different on our, um, budget this year. Uh, unless you guys have any questions.
Mr. Woods, do you have any anticipated major projects in the pipeline?
Not unless you can, um, talk to your friend Jake Arkencloche and have him send us, you know, twenty or thirty million. You know, we, we, we sure would love to extend the lines, but other than that, there's no money in the operating budget to do that.
Thank you.
Title five program, is that for, uh, somebody wants to sell their house, gotta check out their septic system?
I would, I would assume so.
So that's six thousand, six, sixty-nine, that's revenue?
We're.
Title five program?
Yeah, that's actually, I believe, the debt, that's actually the debt test service for the title five advancement program that we have through the board of health, um, that we have to, that's also included in our debt service budget along with the police station. That I don't, I don't believe there's any part of that in, in the sewer enterprise fund though.
No, okay.
Nope. No, there's not.
I like to see it, yeah. Twenty-five, twenty-five. I think that's supposed to be a.
Basically, we, we're telling them it's okay to charge their customers.
I noticed.
Sure.
That under legal fees, they budgeted seventy-five hundred dollars and they haven't spent any this year.
It's our money, Glenn, it's not yours.
The ratepayers' money.
Yeah, like whatever's not spent specifically in the, like sewer budget, that just in, oh, oh, yeah, you've missed, oh, you've missed what's mentioned, like it does actually go back into the enterprise fund as a retained revenue. And, yeah, it doesn't get reclassified anywhere else.
Thank you, yeah, in some years when they've had some significant capital costs, um, we've have told them, use, use the retained earnings and spend that not. Thank you.
Right, and we have not gone up, gone up on our sewer rate for the last three years.
Let's go up.
As you, you know, taxes go up, but the sewer rate has not.
That's good. Any questions on sewer?
Nope.
Nope.
No, thank you, Wood.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. Now.
Now.
Okay.
My brother, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see, our budget did go down a little bit this year and it did go up in a few places that we had no control over. Uh, one being the bases that were given to the, to myself, thank you. And, uh, to, um, my program manager, my office manager and my program manager. Also, uh, one of them did go up a little bit more than usual than the other one because her, um, job description was in the wage survey and, uh, which changed her whole, her grade and step. So that was why she has, uh, it went up by twenty-three percent. And the other two things that we had no control over was the stipends, uh, benefit stipends for education incentives that the two girls received due, due to also new contract negotiations that were put in there and they had already been here over the, um, time, uh, I believe it's a year or two years before they are allowed to, um, get the stipends in their rate of pay. As you can see, our budget did go down a little bit and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. The reason that it did go down is because we are, for the next year, we will be using our grants that we have stashed away. We have some money that we need to use up and we will be using our, um, formula grants, which is, uh, through the executive office of elder affairs. And we've also acquired a couple of other grants, which we'll be using to fund our, our programs and our, our operational budget, and that's the reason why it went down on that end. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
The grants you just got, um, to reduce next year's budget, how long are they good for?
One year.
One until March.
One until March, and I wanted to, that's something that I also wanted to talk to you about, is that, um, a little bit, what is causing my anxiety is that when these grants are done, we're not gonna have that money, this budget will probably go up again. And I just wanted to put that out there. I will continue to look for grants, uh, I'll do the best I can to continue to bring, um, money in to help us, uh, continue to do the job that we're doing. Uh, but just so you know that, next year, I don't have a guarantee on, on that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
The office manager, is that a change in hours or just a change in description?
Change in, uh, the job description, well, she was hired at that job dis, with that job description, but still at that rate was, which was a, a lower rate, low grade and rate, uh, which was still in negotiations with the, um, the union. And it finally went through, so that is why it was a race that was being, had been, been worked on for many years now. So I'm very happy that that did go through, cause that position does deserve that.
Excellent.
I have a question.
Yes.
How's the attendance been? I heard the programs are.
We, I believe we started with eight when we opened up and we reopened up and we're up to seventeen.
Breaks?
Just in time.
The day program, yeah, just the day, yeah, that's the day program, access community programs.
Our community programs continue to grow and continue to bring people, um, from all over. Uh, as we cannot deny people who can, might come from Rehoboth if it's grant funded, I can't say, you know, I have to be able to, so our numbers are growing.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Almost month, monthly, I would say our numbers are growing, not being attendance.
So, and that, to that point, that has made a huge impact to the grants that the council and aging, like Ms. Powell, have been able to apply for, the fact that we're, and the fact that the council and aging has been able to quantify that. Like that has, that has really made us way better positioned to be able to leverage the grant funding that the council and aging has done. So it's a huge, it's a, it's a huge example of the amazing stuff that's happening here.
Right.
Thank you.
So is that, that kind of tracking the usage and, and all, is that something you guys are?
Every day.
Kinda emphasizing now?
Um, that, there's a program called My Senior Center that all the COAs, um, typically use and it wasn't completely, um, utilized to the best of its ability and we did training on it. Both her and I attended the, um, conference training last year. And the My Senior Center, uh, creators really were there and helped teach how to really use that program more. Um, so it's helping us, especially when we apply for the grants, really get better numbers to, to figure out that data, which is great. So I'm excited, cause we've really just started doing that within the last year, knowing the whole ins and outs. So over the next few years, seeing how the numbers are gonna change is gonna be exciting, so.
We are required by the executive office of elder affairs to have a tracking system for our formula grant funding, which we receive every year. And for all the grants that we write, we have to, we need those numbers, they want those numbers and we gotta have them where we do it and doing it on paper just isn't good.
Especially if you've got the information in, it's just a matter of getting it out.
Amazing, the amount you can tweak it to find anything, it's. I wonder about it now, that's awesome, it's so good.
How far?
The program, right.
Perfect, the program that we use, which is my, this, uh, My Senior Center,
um, is actually tied in with the executive office of elder affairs. So at the end of the year, when we have to do our annual report, um, EOE majors goes and gets all the information out of the, you know, it's really a, but interesting thing.
Oh, that's good.
Cause it used to be done by hand and numbers and counting and all that, so it's a wonderful thing.
I do wanna add, I wanted to mention, or if you wanna mention the revolving fund that we're hoping to put in place to then also help us in the future not have to, um, go to the townspeople and ask for certain funding for programs. Um, cause we did do some research in all the local COAs around us, also have our revolving fund in place. So when we have community programs like our fitness class, um, or lunch where people pay to come and we're at a donation, we wanted to add that into our revolving fund so that the money can be taken and we can immediately put out, um, to pay our instructors, um, to pay our grocery bill that, or the, say we ordered ounces, um, which we've done. Uh, we wanted to put that in place so that next year, thankfully, like Bella said, we have received grants that will pay our professional and technical lines. But we wanna have a revolving fund in place to kind of offset what we would have normally asked for in professional and technical that we can just take in and come out. Um, cause the way it's set up right now is we are taking in money for specifically our exercise classes, but that's kind of gets stored away in this account that we can't touch, I don't know the technical.
The general fund.
Okay, and it goes in there and we can't pay out of it. So that just shows how much we've brought in and we've been tracking that too, just to see, kind of give us an idea if we really kind of rev up the whole revolving fund and ask for an actual cost versus a donation. We're seeing where we're at now and what we could expect as a revolving fund balance to help us out, um, but I think it will be even higher unless it's listed as a cost versus a donation. So another area we're trying to work on for. Another area we're trying to work on for annual town meeting, we're hoping to put that as a warrant on fire code to be approved by the townspeople to try to save for our future years.
Some questions on? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My fellow.
Thank you.
My fellow.
I've been hurt too much.
You know the key.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, I just wanna point out that it says seven ten and it's seven, well, seven twelve on the computer, but seven ten up there.
Yeah. Great job. Hello, everyone. Great to see you all again. Just a couple of uh, bullet points that you're looking at, uh, starting with two forty-one and two forty-five. Um, my long-term office manager has decided to retire and raise her grandchildren, so. Um, although I'm disappointed, I'm fully supportive of her writing that new chapter in her life. So in this budget, it's some money to assist with the training for replacement, which will be mid-year, um. So that's why I see some, uh, some increases in some of the waters. I know that the big question is always what do the revenues look like? For a couple of years now, I've been telling the board selectmen of the finance committee that revenues were going to trend downward. Um, they, I was accurate in that uh, supplement. Twenty twenty-two, uh, we saw a fourteen percent decrease in permits and twenty twenty-three turned out to be about a nine to ten percent decrease. So we covered around a thousand permits a year for over twelve years and now we're down to around eight hundred, so. Um, I, that's attributed strictly to the economy, has nothing to do with the operations. Going forward, they'll stay about flat, I do have one subdivision that's coming online probably in the second half of this year, so it will hit this fiscal year. Um, but that's only gonna modestly increase revenues by maybe thirty to forty thousand dollars. So there are no shining stars on the horizon. There were several large-scale projects, uh, boom plane or solar, but all those are just in discussion phase, nothing's actually hit, more permanent. Reason why that's important is the way I structured the fee schedule, those typically um, bring in quite a bit of money. Yes, I'm just not sure if we're gonna hit in the next fiscal year.
With the solar panels and the batteries that we heard about the other night, is that similar or?
Yes, they're both similar, the way I structured the fee schedule, they will both have the same impact on fees, which, uh, just for context, uh, large-scale solar array, like the one uh, you've seen on Trumatch Street, can produce about a hundred thousand dollars in permit fees.
Is that just a one-time?
One-time, one-time.
Can't get an area.
But it does help, it does help the local receives office.
Any, any plans on, or any, any properties in line, or buildings in line for the demo line?
Yes, yeah, there will be three before the end of this year.
Three before the end of this year?
Yeah, the, this year, uh, this fiscal year.
Yeah, twenty-four.
Yeah, that, that money will be expended.
How much you think, any idea what, what those will end up? Okay, not thinking of reserve?
No, will it require a transfer? No, no, I think I'll be able to handle the demolitions with what's in my account.
Okay.
Yes.
So the solar arrays?
Yes.
They uh, a hundred thousand initially, they're all there from those contracts. What's the tax rate on those?
Those um, those are actually classified in the personal property and uh, that's why it is a best practice once the solar, once the solar farms are up and running to um, actually have towns enter into a part, into a payment in lieu of act structure with uh, with, uh, with sole entities, because the per, the personal property can be very volatile every year, like in very, oh yeah, there's no exact science in terms of really quantifying the, of that personal property. Uh, I guess that's why one of the best practices, uh, oh yeah, the towns, a lot of towns to pursue, like we have already, like it's entered, it's entering, it's entering into a pilot agreement with sole entities, those and those agreements do have to be brought, brought uh, for the town meeting. Uh, in a pilot agreement does allow for, uh, does allow for a very defined and predictable tax structure to have to take a lot of the guesswork and also a lot of the potential litigation uh, out of the personal property calculation process.
Okay, so is it, is it based anything at all on how much energy it's producing?
No, no. Typically, however, that's, that's a good question because it is relative. The, the way that the assesses office, and we worked together on this years ago, is they structure it based on the size of the array, based on panel size, which is how I structure my fee schedule. So, change your question, yes, it does impact, because the larger the scale, the, the solar array, the more power it'll make, right? However, we don't do it based on power generation, because that is, again, volatile, depends on how much the sun shines, right?
Beyond shines. And the only shifts.
Which hasn't happened at all in the past few years. Um, but the, the other thing, just to uh, expand on Mr. Mullins' comments, is the town has done a great job with its pilots, um, where we front-load most of those pilots. And it's a twenty-year um, agreement, so we, we are guaranteed a revenue stream for twenty years. Uh, most of it's front-loaded, as I said, so we get a lot of it upfront. Um, but from a development perspective, it takes the volatility, as Mr. Mullins says, out of it. You know what your budget is for the next twenty years, which we all know is about the lifespan of these things anyway, so. Yeah, so they do, they do generate revenue outside from the one-time permit fee, yes.
Right now, the, that goes into general fund as well?
Yes. Yes.
So there's three potential this year.
Sorry?
There's three potential.
Not, they're, they haven't been gone through permitting yet, they're just in discussion. So if they were in permitting now, then I would say they would hit for FY twenty-five, they're not. They can take up to two years.
But as an example, that's about a hundred thousand.
Yes, so twenty-six, local revenues may look very good. It's not, you know, not like this year's, um, but I won't know until these projects evolve. Uh, the uh, the Hunters Hill, which is the one that recently changed ownership and is going to finally get uh, rolling in the second half of this year, that is a four-year project, so we'll see a steady increase in permit revenues starting mid-year for the next three or four years.
And where's the Hunters Hill located?
I'm sorry?
Where is that developer located?
It's located on the Swansea Line off of uh, William Street, up near Shop Slot Road area.
Oh, yep.
It's a gated community.
How many houses?
In total, a hundred and forty-five.
No, that are going to be built?
A little over a hundred.
Wow.
And a very respected, responsible developer and supporter, so I'm looking forward to working with them.
Any questions on uh, it's really two forty-one to, to two forty-five.
Yeah.
Weights and measures, are we moving on to all of them?
Yep.
Uh, is that expenditure only done in the summer or?
I just received the first bill the last week, so, and we budgeted fifteen hundred.
Yep.
The bill from the state was fourteen hundred to twenty, I think, two dollars, so we nailed it.
Yeah?
Yeah. They only fill us once a year.
Okay.
Um, and I didn't know when to expect it, I just getting answers sometimes from the state, but it just landed at my desk uh, last week.
So now that you know what that cost is, are you still comfortable with the fifteen hundred for next year?
I, I am.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we don't have any commercial entities looking to move into town, so that will stay the same. However, now that I know what the costs are, I'm going to bill the um, consumers accordingly. So that, that money will come back to us in the local revenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on two forty-one to two forty-five?
Plumbing.
Yeah.
So we've got permit review, education fifty-one oh seven, under that two forty-three plumbing, nothing's been expended.
Correct, that was a new mandate by the state for my as my first. And uh, as with most programs from the state, they put the mandate out and then come six or eight months later with exactly what I'm supposed to do to certify and educate them, I still haven't received that yet. However, I know it's not going to be backed away, it's something that I have to do.
Okay.
So um, eventually that, that line will get hit.
Okay. That must be the same with the gas inspection?
Same for all three of my disciplines, electrical, gas, well, not gas.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just in terms of what I think, um, I mean, you need to touch on public buildings in one ninety-two, which is why, which is right on the building assignment. One ninety-two. Uh, public building is actually, uh, the town, probably for department that which is shared between my office and me and the building commissioner. We have, we have a lot of fun working with that in this budget, what, this three year?
Nine.
Nine station.
One ninety-two. Now, this budget is really straightforward. We have, like, as I mentioned, a lot earlier this week, uh, FY twenty-five will be the last year of the library module list, which is very welcome news. Um, the energy, town office, uh, uh, the energy, the comming of energy account, uh, we did have like a mid-year increase, uh, based on our electrical aggregation, um, and that increased just affected the beginning of December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we did actually, uh, everyone will probably remember, we actually um, uh, proposed a special article to fund that difference in FY twenty-four, so um, what like is incorporated into FY twenty, oh, like into FY twenty-five budget is like a four-year of that increase. The um, we do have, uh, we do maintain, uh, like a public, public building repair maintenance line that um, in prior years, um, uh, uh, had been able to be funded, um, at forty thousand dollars, it's funded at twenty-five thousand dollars in FY, um, FY twenty-four, uh, based on how we're, oh yeah, projecting, making, oh, like in predicting what our needs will be through the end of the year, like we're planning on it coming, like actually exceedingly close to the twenty-five thousand dollar number, so. Oh, like in like this plan with fire a little bit there, but based on our budget position. Uh, like, oh, uh, uh, I'm recommending that that be level funded. Um, and then everything else, like the, like in fifty-four twenty, we do have, uh, we do have like a yield, oh yeah, we do have a yearly uh, custodial contract that we bid out every year. Um, this year, the cost of that is, um, uh, it's fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars and so we're projecting we have a very, 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 uh, we have a very, very, very competitive rate, uh, with a very, uh, with a very local company and I, we do have like a really good value and uh, but like we are projecting a very uh, very modest increase in that, uh, when we do go back up a bit for that later, uh, uh, in the fiscal year as well.
Have you got any other questions? Uh, on that, uh, with the building commissioner, too. Uh, Jim, is there anything you wanted to add?
The only thing that I'll add is if we do have something that comes up that was not, um, out of that twenty-five thousand dollars, that any sort of couldn't anticipate failure or something, that would have to come back to you while our reserve or transfer. Um, but obviously, that would be something that no one could have anticipated, you know, failure in a heating unit or something like that.
Yeah, this year, just really to echo that point, uh, this year we had a, I believe, I believe two of our HVA systems were hit by lightning. Um, and those bills were about seven thousand dollars each, which we had to absorb, uh, like, you know, with Allah, right at the beginning of the fiscal year in July. So those are the type of
Right.
Very unpredictable things that when they happen, they happen. Uh, those type of jobs are also prevailing wage jobs as well, so.
Insurance doesn't cover that?
Both, both of those issue because they were like repairs, it was like, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like in my opinion, like without deductible, like, yeah, oh, without deductible, like a five thousand dollars, so the way it is, like we, we have to be a crap shooter.
Right.
You know, like we can put in a claim and then a premium goes up, so.
None of the five thousand dollars we got from the night.
Yeah, so, we had your backs.
The five thousand two hundred and ten line, Energy Town Office Building is one forty-one, hundred and thirty-one thousand. Do we have um, solar panels on the, on the property, on the, on the town hall?
Not yet, um, I would, I would like to try to like, I mean, like, I would like to, uh, like especially in, uh, like, oh, like in the coming year, like really like do an analysis of all of our, oh, really do an analysis like of all like our roofs and also our publicly owned town land, that we might have the ability to, to really capture the type of revenue that a lot of our homeowners and everyone else are trying to capture there. In terms of the, of our town buildings though, that, um, that whole process is a very, is a very complex process in evaluating uh, like the engineering, the load, capacity and everything for uh, roofs, but there are, oh yeah, like based on how, based on how the town is able to structure out really the procurement, that we do have an opportunity, we do have an opportunity to look at that and to, and to try to capture some revenue to offset these very, very, very growing costs.
You know, the other thing I'll add to that is um, sort of cause and effect. Roofs seem like the most commonplace to put solar panels, but as I said earlier, it's usually a twenty-year return. That means we have to assess the roof, and if the roof is not a twenty-year roof, then we have to replace the roof before we put the panels on. Um, so, you know, unfortunately, town hall would be the biggest um, building that we have and that roof is not a twenty-year roof, so now we have to come up with capital to replace the roof before we put the panels on. So we really, I think it's gonna require uh, an in-depth analysis, as Mr. Mullins said, of both buildings and land, and then see what we can do to try and get that lined out.
Yeah, like just really to that point, but the energy was here last week talking about their solar project that is now almost operate, almost operational, the margins on that whole project are very, very, very small. Like they, yeah, I mean, like it's gonna be a benefit to them, but the margins to get it done were extremely light.
Right, so much so that um, the selectman would petition to reduce the fee, the permit fee for that, just because it was so tight that if they paid the permit fee, it would not make the project viable. So, so that's, and the selectmen were, were amendable to that.
Yeah, I know I had to rent my house and there was no real saving of margin.
Right.
And, yeah, like and that is real, that, that whole analysis really would come into play and the importance placed on that.
Yeah, there's a cost to the system and then there's a cost to. Yeah, there's a cost to the system and then there's a cost to putting it up. And then you don't coop for quite a while, but you still look to the electric.
Right. The only large land area that we had in discussion in years past was the transfer station, the cap landfill. And I actually was against that because it's a cap landfill. And I didn't think that was a good place for solar panels. So would I change my stance on that? As technology improves, panels become lighter, then maybe, maybe I would, but at that particular time, I was not in favor.
Don't they have, I think they have shins now that are actually made as?
They do, yeah, they do, yes. It's not
So it is improving, but
It is improving.
But if the percentage, I bet, is not as high as a
No, it's not. The efficiency on those shins is much lower than the actual
Let's say average efficiency isn't around thirty percent, twenty-something?
On the shins?
No, on the, on the panels.
Overall, to the calendar year, yes. That's, that's a good number. Yes.
Srinath, do you have where we are, uh, at least through February on energy?
Yes, yes. Just in that town office buildings, the one that was appropriated at one hundred and five thousand, through the end of March, we, uh, it's actually now in split off. So it's, I have to separate my, um, library and fire because they have to do reporting at the end of the year. And it was a lot easier to just have them in a separate line to see exactly what they had spent. So, the energy, they spent about forty-seven thousand through the end of March. Just in that line, the five-one-two-zero.
That doesn't include firing?
So that includes library? Oh, hold on, and then, yep, fire is another
Right.
ten, five, thirty-four, so about fifty-eight thousand. And that's, but I will say that the bills are typically a month behind. We just had, I think, like fifteen thousand come through that will be paid next Thursday on top of that.
Yeah, you said the real march, but
Yeah.
Yeah, that is the challenge. You're always a month behind, so it's huge in that. Then trying to look back at, oh, like where we went wrong, or like what our challenge has been in projecting, oh, like, I need to budget, like up until this year, we were always looking at those trends. Uh, then we always had a month behind. We're always caught up at the end of the year. So we're really trying to learn from that and have a real true number.
Is that fifteen, is that the new, the new norm? Fifteen thousand?
That had a little bit of catch-up. Um, there was a couple of bills that were missed. So that might be slightly higher. I think the catch-up was about sixty-five hundred, about fifteen, that, you know, should have been paid all along, but just got caught up. Ask you once.
This storage has a question.
Uh, is that a question or is that the?
I know, yeah.
Any questions on one ninety-two?
No.
Anything else for you, Jim? Okay, yeah. What, what thirty-three first?
So just a couple of points as you're looking at this. I'm not sure if you have the, um, supplemental that I did, but I had two lines highlighted, and that's the disposal lines. Those, those disposal, uh, costs that might get published FY twenty-five. So I carried them level. Um, we have a great relationship with our curbside bar. I had many conversations with him, and he assures me that he does not think that we're having spikes in disposal costs this year. So whatever increase we have should be fairly modest. But I did not want to just pick a number. I, I set it level. And hopefully we'll have those numbers fairly soon.
I actually don't have it highlighted. Do you want to specify exactly which line?
Yes, it's the, um,
And with the C mass for one hundred and fifty thousand?
Right.
Fifty-two ninety-four?
Hundred and five thousand?
Yeah, fifty-two ninety-four and fifty-three oh three.
I have one question. The fifty-three hundred, monitoring the test well, testing wells, monitoring the testing of the wells.
You beat me to it. Um,
I thought that was water department.
It's not. These are, these are
A little oversight?
Is it? No, these are monitoring wells for the, uh, the disposal dump, the transfer station, yes. But, but that does bring me to a good point. What I found, this is my first, uh, uh, time managing this department. Um, I actually haven't done it for a full year yet. I'm finding out that a lot of the costs and expenses are in the after part of the fiscal year. So you might see a lot of these lines have been expended, however, they will be in the next several months. And just expanding upon that, one thing I noticed that the administrative law reduced some of the lines. I understand why. We have to try to come up with a balanced budget. But because this department is fairly fresh with me, with oversight, if we run a deficit, um, I'm just gonna come back to you for, for some assistance, that's all.
Is that fuel surcharge sign, is that, uh, not Fordges?
That's, yes, that's contractual. And it's, uh, anything over, I believe it's three eighty-five, if I'm not mistaken. We are required to pay him the differential. So diesel prices have been fairly moderate right now. Um, we do see a spike at any time. So if that happens, that's one of the particular lines that would probably be most volatile, is that if we did see a spike in diesel costs, then we would blow through that money pretty quickly. This is also the last year of our contract with Fordges. I have a handshake, uh, agreement with him that he will submit another, another three-year term. Hopefully he's successful in getting that. We had all thought that maybe this would be the last year for Fordges' period, but I think we'll at least have it for another three years if he's successful getting it. Which is important.
It'll be a new contract for fiscal year twenty-six.
Right. Which is important because, um, what we're finding out from our peers at the state is Dyson is doing very well with our curbside bar, uh, being very fair with us. So we hope that we can continue that relationship. Someday when it does end, um, this piggybacks on the solid waste discussion we had earlier, we need to get this figured out. I'm on that committee, and I will say that that committee is doing this, uh, yeoman's work to try to figure this all out, and I'm sure we will.
Any questions on four thirty-three?
No.
Nope.
Five-ten?
That wall is thin.
Two five minutes.
It's actually a bedded wall.
Oh, it's like, it's not the place to go have secret discussions.
How many, how many members on the board of health?
Three.
Thank you. That includes the chair.
Correct.
Board of Health inspectors, septic?
Yep, we have a part-time health agent. Her employment required her to get four certifications, certifications. She has three out of the four. And she's taken upon herself to attain number twenty-seven, so she has over thirty certifications. So we've done very well with our health agent. However, the one, the one that is missing is the septic that's high five, and obviously we have a lot. So I have a per diem inspector who helps. I fill the gap where I can. So we're managing it very well and don't anticipate any great changes in that.
Is she working towards the septic?
Yes, yes. It's just it's not something that happens overnight. It's, it's definitely, it's acquired.
Yeah.
Real quick on that, uh, septic was brought up earlier. Uh, that septic bed in the program is something that is underutilized. That's one of the first things I looked at when I took over the supervisory role. That is a program that is run by the Warb Health, the Treasury Collector, with some input from the assessors office. It allows us to offer low-interest loans to taxpayers to replace their septic systems. So it's a revenue stream, a small revenue stream, but more importantly, it's a way you're not feeling for taxpayers to replace their second septic systems without having to go outside financing. So I've initiated a discussion with the Treasury Collector. We're working on the logistics now, and I plan to promote that program, and hopefully people utilize, oh, yeah. That said, some of those revenues will be increased in that line. It's certainly not going to balance the budget, but we will make some money through that program. And it's still a better interest rate than someone to get from the local banks, so it's a win-win.
That's a great idea.
The cost of the septic system being replaced, that comes from a bank or from a state program?
That's actually what the Treasury Collector is looking into now, is where that funding source is. I don't have that answer.
Right. But it would pay for it upfront and maybe the
Yes.
You were saying that would make payments to that loan at smaller interest rates?
Over twenty years.
Over twenty?
That would add into the tax bill. That's why the assessors would do that. So they can spread out the cost over a long period of time, which makes it more affordable. And from a health perspective, we replace a bad septic system.
And you would get a revenue source?
Yes. The interest that we capture on that loan actually stays longer.
Jim, you may not know, but is it transferable or if they sell, does that get paid back?
I believe it's paid back, yes. Those are all the, the, what we're flushing out right now, yeah.
That would make sense.
Basically, the folder was dusted off and
So the majority of them probably wouldn't be paid off right away. It wouldn't collect much interest because it would be done
Yeah, whether there's a payoff penalty or something like that, I don't know all those details, but, again, it's, it's not a huge revenue source, but I just wanted you to know that we're working to try to use all opportunities available to both help the people and to create some revenue streams.
It is a program that helps
It does.
For people that need, have a need, so.
It does.
Because you don't expect that expense when that comes.
That's a big one.
Yeah, and it's not a
Right, and
You don't plan for that one?
No, I, I know that most of us realize that that happens when there's a transfer of sale, but there are many septic systems out there that fail and people have no intentions on moving. And they have no way to pay for that. So this is, it's, it's, it's a great program.
Is it need-based, so, do they have to do?
Uh, no, the, there is no qualifying criteria, if that's what you're asking. The, uh, there are some, uh, upfront costs that they must come up with. It does not pay all of the cost. For instance, the, um, initial testing and engineering needs to be paid by the consumer. It's not, it can't be moved into the, uh, to the loan. So it's basically covered the installation cost, which, as everyone knows, is the bulk of the, the, the cost. But thank you for asking that earlier.
I know we have a lot of them in town. We have them on my street.
A few.
Yeah. Keep waiting, then they're coming with the city school.
Let me call Jacob and watch.
Yeah. Twenty million, right? That was the number?
Twenty million.
Probably inflation more than that now.
Any questions on five-ten?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Conservation.
Secretary of Department, one seventy-one.
One seventy-one.
Just so you know, the two million dollar budget we requested has been reduced to what it said before.
You did a good job.
That was me.
That was fine.
The clerical, is that based on, what's that increase based on?
Okay, the clerical worker is the assistant to Lisa Calaboni, the agent. She is in part-time. I, I don't count any hours a week, but she is shared between that and the sewer department. And, uh, she does, uh, turn this around, the extra clerical worker to keep Lisa going in the field because Lisa is at times run ragged between going out to sites and writing up orders of conditions and the rest. Is that what you're looking for or?
Eight hours.
A week, eight months or?
No change.
No, and the clerk, and the conservation clerical was actually combined with the conservation, like secretary line as well. It's really a wash.
Okay.
Yeah, like it's really like the same amount of money. We just like combine all those lines.
Okay.
Or you were looking at the four, I didn't know the percentage of that.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yeah.
I noticed that in the professional intent, between the request and the TA's recommendation of a difference of a thousand dollars, you proposed an increase of a thousand dollars. Why?
While we've been having, uh, a tremendous amount of mailings going out, we, when we ought to give cease and desist orders, we have to send it certified mail. Or we have to get, um, uh, someone to deliver, especially that, um, some outside agent to deliver. I think that's what, let me see here. Sometimes we need, uh, an attorney to give us a quick advice on something that we aren't going to run to the, uh, selectmen for. And so, you know, we have just been so busy with, with, uh, everything going on in town that, that, uh, we just need a little extra funds to, to keep that going.
Now, it's my understanding that you currently have litigation that could affect
Well, right now, there's strawberry fields, which we are funding maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, we already beat them. I mean, we already beat them previously, and now a new occupant come in. And the state is playing games, saying, first of all, overriding us. And then the new director comes in and says, oh, they're good. They're good, you know, the Conservation Commission is right. And all of a sudden, you get another level of saying, oh, we're going to help them rewrite it so that they can go through with it. We don't know where it stands. They play games, this is the state now, is playing games with us on when their orders come in. And if we wish to respond, our time limit is greatly reduced. Now, I don't know if that's what you're after.
Well, you don't
But we have a lot of money going out. And that comes out of the agricultural tax money that comes back to us. And we would much rather buy land with that and put on programs in the town. And this is what we're using it for, to do appeals with places like Strawberry Fields. And now we have Forest Hills, which we rejected, and that's already an appeal. But that's, I don't think that's, no cost are very limited.
So you're
Not till now, anyway.
You're saying you've taken money out of your agricultural?
Well, it's the rollback. I should say the tax, okay.
No, no, I understand, but that money ideally was intended to buy conservation land.
Ideally, but it's also used to support the commission in other ways. And this is one of the ways that the attorney, town council, has said that it can be used. It's been used in the past. And at least in the past, we won the case. It's for the same lot, the same parcel that it's running again. So, but yes, ideally, we would have probably all this land along the river, the town river. And we have some of it now, but we'd like to have more and, you know, to put it under our control and to keep it protected. We have many places in town that need protection.
But on the other side of the coin, with times being tight budget-wise, and a deficit of $250,000, if you needed additional funds for professional and technical, you could in fact go to that account as well.
If there's anything left in it after Strawberry Fields.
Do you know how much you get every year, or?
No, that depends upon what farm land is transferreded to other uses. And then the extra tax money that they would have spent in the past, because it's being sold for residential or commercial or whatever use, we get the payback difference.
And how much in that account currently?
I don't know.
I believe it's $140,000.
$140,000.
Right now, I know we've got enough to cover strawberry, you know, for our fees. You know, we have the legal, we have, I mean, there's engineers, there's wetland scientists, there's you know, it's amazing, the people that have to throw support to us to bring it before the judge or was overhearing it out there.
So worst-case scenario, worst comes to worst, you could, if the town administrator's recommendation was followed, reach into that agricultural account to fund or make up the difference?
Yeah.
If this board should choose
Right now, we don't know exactly what it's going to cost. We have an estimate. We have an estimate of what it's going to cost us. And if the estimate is accurate, yeah, we would have the money there.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't know. So, okay.
Any questions on 171?
There is one other item, and I don't know, it's under, it's the 5158 Uniform Boots Stipend. And we had initially asked for 500. That's what the commission voted on to, for that year. And when Lisa and I were going over everything, we're looking at, you know, some of her needs for the year. And we don't know if that can be changed. It was recommended that we do 300 rather than the 500. And yet, we're wondering if the 500 was even enough because days like today, she has to be out in the field. And, you know, rain gear. She doesn't have a hot hat for commercial or industrial sites such as the sewer panels. I know when I've gone out to sites, they've thrown me a hot hat that I couldn't go on site unless I had a hot hat. And it's probably not good to rely upon the people we are monitoring. Let's see, orange vests, pretty important during hunting season when you're in the field looking around. And, you know, so we were only looking at, is even 500 enough? And then it was cut back to 300. Just throwing that out.
Question?
Yes.
And I know in Taunton, we had to do it this way. Do you require recs when they submit their budgets for supply?
Do you require recs?
Or potential requisition, whatever.
Like a purchase order?
It's similar to a purchase order, but it wouldn't be a direct order. It would be a price listing. So if you're asking for boots, you are presenting the style, the type, the boot, the price. So when I'm saying, well, it might be 300, 500, you know exactly how much it would cost.
Right, so we don't currently require that. That's, you know, zero-based budget is the document where that could be explained to justify the amount that they're asking for. But we don't require it. We came up with the $300 last year. The average working boots, we figured it was about 150. They need two sets of boots, you know, depending on how active they actually are, how many hours they were, how much they're actually needed out in the fields with that sign. So that's how we came to the 300 last year. And we set that $300 boot stipend for a few different departments, just to have everybody all on the same page and treating everyone the same. But, you know, everyone that has to go out to the fields is getting the same benefit. Because these people are outside of contract, there's no appointment letter, they're not in a union. So it's, we're kind of trying to keep all of those people in the same line.
Okay, well, actually, I'm going a little bit even beyond the boots, though, because of the hat, the high-visibility vest. I'm requiring her to make sure that her clothes are well-protected with bug spray because I don't want her to get lyme disease and be out of commission for a month or whatever, however it works. Sunblock and, you know, in the wrist. And, you know, it's more than just the cost of boots. It's those additional things. And is it a one-time deal? Well, I don't know. I don't know how long these things are. She, you know, she has her personal chaps that she wears out there, but they're falling apart because they get ripped out with the briars. And I'm not going out there. I'm not taking blood sinkling out of the briars. But, you know, that's her job, she's out there all the time. So this is why, you know, we're looking at at least 500 on that. And it was cut back.
All right, so we understand that. And, you know, within the 500, if she, I mean, sorry, within the 300 that we have had for everybody that goes out in the field, if she was to put through vests or other things, as long as it was within that 300, you know, we could probably make that work if she, you know, does it within the office budget.
I'm just thinking that it would be more than that. And again, I guess if we had to, we could look for another account. But since we have this account, it would be good to go out of that.
And it is a full bottom-line budget. So if there is a line that you're not fully expending, that would cover any shortage that was in a separate line.
Okay.
And one of the things I just want to add, like, we're talking, I mean, like, we do have a vote from the full Concom about the 300. We don't have a vote from the full Concom on anything more than that, so.
500, was it 500 was the vote?
They're required.
Yeah, all right, I'm sorry, okay. My apologies.
So is it a reimbursement?
Yes.
So do they turn in receipts?
So this fiscal year, it is a reimbursement, yep. You know, there's certain criteria, can't just, you know, has to be actually working boots. It can't just be, you know, a pair of sneakers, something like that, yeah.
Okay, but this whole program has, like, there's a ton of counter, it has been haphazard. Like, in prior years, we've had employees in the field who haven't received any other type of boot or any type of representation allowance. Then we had other employees who worked in the field, they had allowances more than $500. So we've tried to create some sense of uniformity here. And, yeah, like, I mean, we're open to further defining you. But like, we all became from a place of really having no definition of all, at all.
Any questions on 171?
No.
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 All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you industrial also?
Do we stand anywhere on that 500?
We'll, so we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting in probably a month or so, figure out where, what fin comments recommending, and the Board of Selectmen are going to get together and do the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any industrial?
Thanks, Joe, if you both feel what we're working on, let me get some questions for me. So we are requesting a level funding from last year of $1,000. As you can see, most of our expenditures, the bulk of that is for money and contracts from FY23 for a home drone videography project, which states on photography and videography of the town. And you're for coupon marketing. That's something we actually haven't started using yet, but we do plan to reach out to notite businesses to attract them and talent, having workers to video for being in that yet. But we have actually started that process on a direct basis. Part of the budget, so we're also a sponsor of last year, probably next year, the Town Mary Chamber of Commerce. This year was held at Bristol Hakey, sponsoring that for $250,000. The expenses don't reflect the $250 private contribution that we received. Used the offset printing, which was nice, but not something we should necessarily expect for next year. So we incorporated the $250 back into the budget. Really, the cost is for anticipated printing and some mailings, but mostly printing. Most of our messaging is out there online, but you always expect, particularly as we're going to start moving outside, like, we'll try to work with attracting businesses. But that's all we're going to need, mutual, flyers, handouts, course present, we have events. We're starting to work on Mary's program. And I can talk a little bit about what we're planning next year, unless there's any specific questions for me.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So in December, the Board of Selectmen did accept an updated economic development plan. There were several items in there that are all under the Development and Industrial Commission. And many of those are going to probably entail printing costs. To be honest, many of them right now are just research study projects for us. So it's hard to tell precisely where they're going to land in terms of anticipated printing. But some of those are updating the town's business development and permitting guides to make them easier to follow, finding ways to support growth of home-based businesses, which has been our primary goal for the last couple of years. Researching how other towns approach global landscape designing guidelines and seeing if they could be beneficial incorporated and what are the benefits, plus benefits associated with that. Researching how other towns have found ways to enhance agriculture community to contributors cases. There are two primary sites in town that looks as though it's been managed and successful elsewhere. There's actually quite a lot of demand. Investigating further ability of the town to lease land for agricultural use, which the town actually does pay on a limited basis, but could be expanded. Researching ideas for types of technical support the town could offer small businesses to see what other towns have done and what the cost and debt that's associated with that, what the types of technical assistance the town could conceivably make available. And then also ways to help promote ecotourism for some of the farm communities in town. It's done today on a limited basis, for example, at Brugge's, but it is another, you know, avenue stream for a lot of farms. So we just want to see other ways to take the other zoning or permitting or guidelines that we see in the way of that. So that's our agenda for the year. We do anticipate that a lot of that is going to turn into communications, letting people know what's available. And then, you know, participating in outside events. So that's where we came up with that $1,000 level funding.
Just a general question. I'm assuming the commission would pretty much just be reporting back to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
How often does that happen?
Well, we have a liaison right now, Mr. Hulke, who, that is our primary way of reporting back.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if there were other more standards, you know, quarterly or whatever updates that the full Board of Selectmen would request, we're going to see if they'll pull that.
Right now, you got it in.
Mr. Roche, I also would like to add that the DDIC has received a large amount of in-kind services from the Taunton area of Chamber of Commerce and especially Serpent.
Okay.
The plan that they put together, and those in-kind services are not reflected in this budget. But if they were, it would be significant.
Any questions on 189?
No.
So when you say that there's significant amounts of, is that revenue?
No, no, in-kind services.
In-kind services.
In the area of wheat, wheat. I'll give you an example, in the city of Taunton, they have two planners on their staff. One gets paid $95,000 a year, the other one around $92,000. We don't have anyone like that in Dyton. So they have to turn to agencies like Serpent and the Chamber, who have people, we're very fortunate, one of the members of the DDIC is Jonathan Gagat, who was former resident of Dyton, who does urban planning, who serves on that board. And they have put together a comprehensive plan for development for the town of Dyton. At, how much did it cost the town?
I'm not sure that
No, we didn't have any cost at all, and plus it was also grant-funded, too.
Right.
And for the past two years, we've had the Business Networking Center over at Bristol Hakey, which I'm sure it cost at least $8,000 to $10,000 to put on. And it was completely covered by the Chamber and contributions from sponsors, so.
So that's what we mean by in-kind services. I mean, the hourly rate for a planner is like $125 an hour. Lizette, I mean, how many hours did she spend from Serpent? At no chance.
Any other questions on 189?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Historical commission is, okay.
This is Department 691.
This is Department six ninety-one.
Historical commission is asking for a level fund, we've got it since last year. Basically, our expenses are about the same. We just, I took zeroed out the equipment repairs and maintenance because we just have our cabinet in Old Town Hall that houses our busicles came. We haven't had any wear and repair in a number of years, and it just sits there, so we zeroed that one out. Professional and technical, those are the fees for the commission members to attend conferences and workshops and also to pay preservation consultant fees. We've been working on our survey, updating our survey forms, and every now and then we do have to meet with this preservation consultant to answer questions as we keep the process going. Communications is basically for mailings and any other items that we would need to communicate our mission or mail things out. Under other supplies, we're working on getting historical markers, so we have two for town buildings. So we have two historical markers in this budget. This is our office supplies, this allows us to make copies of the survey forms from the preservation consultant, brochures as we need it to help explain our mission and also to highlight my history. And of course, travel, if any of our members go to any conferences or workshops.
Historical markers, what buildings do you open?
This year, we bought one for Old Town Hall, we're working on one for the center of the anti-schoolhouse. Next year, it would be for the Smith Memorial Hall, which will be the library. And hopefully, the Carnegie Building, the old library.
Thank you.
Yep. Those have been running about a hundred and twenty-six dollars each. We're looking at a new vendor, so that price could change. Hopefully less.
You guys, do you typically go to conferences, workshops?
We try to, we haven't been very successful. There's one conference that they have in Clinton every other year, we thought they were gonna be having it this year. Well, there were three, three of us were planning on going and they canceled it. So there is one coming up in June, hopefully, you know, a couple of us maybe will go to that. Personally, I like to try to get to one. Sometimes it's hard for others, we've been trying, COVID really knocked that whole thing to pieces. They've had trauma, getting those historical events back together.
Any questions on six ninety-one?
On the professional and technical, were there any expenses made or any payments made on that line this year? Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can clarify that, through March, they've spent a total of eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. And four hundred and thirty was from professional and technical. Thank you.
Any other questions on six ninety-one?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a town historian, we have a letter, is there?
We do, it's Department six ninety, so there's a letter in here.
Just read a summary. Historians requested an increase from two fifty to two thousand dollars to create a document. First, a series of documents outlining important facets of town history over the last four centuries. Since towns in cooperation seventeen twelve, funding would provide approximately five hundred copies. If and as needed, numbers of booklets will be adjusted to fit proposed amount. If approved, basic plan would be a booklet is a threefold. You can make this available if anybody wants to see it.
Money.
Yes. That is a significant increase, but I was curious, did they go look for sponsors? They're creating a historical book, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if you sold ads, you could almost pay for the book.
Probably pay for the book and then pay for the next series.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would agree to make a suggestion, too, as an addition to the five hundred copies, if that PDF can be added to the website, that when you go to the town's website, you open that up.
Yeah.
Add it that way, you'd have copies.
Right, and indefinite number of copies.
Right.
I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm going to say, since we have a letter and not someone to ask the questions of, that.
We can email and follow up.
Okay.
What?
Maybe we just ask Glenn's question and whether it was planned on being available online?
Online and any sponsors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions on that?
No, thank you.
Cable.
Thanks for the guy talking.
Um, I don't know if anyone just wants a overview on kind of how the department works, because I know we have some new members. Our funding comes from our PEG accounts, everybody in town who has Comcast, there'll be a little percent that's on that bill. And that money is what comes in and funds our budget. So this is not taxpayer or not gone through the tax, the typical taxpayers. So, um, we did increase our sound line, we have three members that are now at the twenty dollars an hour wage versus minimum wage. And we do have an expected increase in using hours due to the studio that we have in our office space now, that we are planning to make a lot of new original content in. We actually work alongside the DDIC right now with one show that we're doing with them that we can use in the Old Town Hall space that will now thankfully be able to use our studio space with a lot of other upcoming shows we have planned. I know Mike is interested in his own show, too, so. We're just finishing the back job and you're getting tired, you're getting your show, too.
Breakfast, breakfast for the night?
Breakfast for the night.
No one takes me seriously.
I think it's gonna be highly viewed.
I think for the most part, a lot remained very similar. Any of the increases are really coming through with us utilizing our actual space more than us going to other spaces and filming just meetings. If there are any questions, I do have what we have in our balance for our PEG funds, which currently, actually, this was through February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, our ending balance was three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. We obviously aren't spending as much as we have, but it's been a little hard with just the three part-time employees, and we don't wanna just recklessly spend money, even though it goes back into that account, we wanna be a little responsible about what we're doing. So we're doing these budgets, obviously, and we've brought in some things to town more like we did last year. We probably will again this year, because it's not gonna be part of a continuous budget, it's just kind of a one-time purchase for, for example, a new server that we're looking to. You'll see, we have a ten thousand dollar for equipment repairs and maintenance that you guys have suggested we do. Because of having to maintain it and it's getting older, we're gonna likely put that through once we get the quote on the warrant to just completely replace it so that we can give ourselves some peace of mind that the channel won't just, um, break.
Yeah.
And the other thing you notice, too, like, the last town hall meeting, you saw our new equipment, so now we had, like, you know, air speakers up there, better soundboard, XRL cables, things that have been needed for a long time, we're finally picking those items up now to be more cushion at the cable.
Do you guys control the lights, too?
No.
No, unfortunately, we don't. We're hoping that Mike maybe, you know, give us.
I need to clear out the head.
Yeah, me, too.
That would be great.
So are you planning for the server, are you planning on putting an article in or using the equipment?
Yes. Article, yeah.
Article, okay.
Uh, because this wouldn't be enough to completely replace it, that would be enough to help with repairs, but, um, we got a rough quote, but we're waiting for the finalized quote, and it's, it's much more than a thousand dollars. So that would likely be on the warrant, so we're just, I'm assuming, because that's due by the tenth, right? The warrant articles, we're assuming we'll get it before then, we just don't have a exact figure right now.
Okay.
And typically, that funding would still come from the PEG, yes, right?
Still come from PEG, yes, yeah.
Yeah, still wouldn't be something we're buying every year, of course, it's just a one for a few years. Hopefully, everything just keeps getting better and better, and, um, that's kind of the tough part with the tech world, is that things update faster than most things, so.
Does Comcast ever offer you their, the equipment that they find that they don't need anymore?
Um, like, if they had surplus? No, uh, we don't use, well, I guess in certain senses we do, although lots of some things that we've used, but, um, we've never been.
Gifted?
Gifted anything.
Usually, the equipment like that, though, if it, if it isn't surplus, it's probably like the end of life, it's probably get three or four years on it. So that would put us in that same predicament where, you know, we might have a server outage because one of the pods just finally gave out. Aker's is sort of like, what they call a state brand, they recommend it, they do a lot of schools, town halls and things like that. So we've been using Aker's now probably the past few years. They've been very good, far as we give him a call, he's always trying to help us out. Where before we had, we were dealing with somebody up in New Hampshire, and we had to pay him a service call to come all the way down. These guys are located in Brockton, so they're like, you know, thirty minutes out, which is kind of nice.
Don't charge us for those.
Yeah, some of those service calls are free, so.
Faces that I'll do for eight p.m. on a Sunday, which is awesome. And he typically comes at lowest price for equipment, too. Actually, everything has so far that we've upgraded, at least inside my here.
So your department does these events, um?
Um, this one's through Zoom, so we'll get the video downloaded from Zoom once it's completed and uploaded to YouTube. So that's what kind of we do behind the scenes if it's a Zoom meeting, the meetings that are held in Old Town Hall. Uh, there is the area in the lower level that's currently the library, and once they move, I believe that was turning back into a meeting space, that lower level at the moment, that's still the plan, so we operate those cameras that are built in. But not, those are the only two buildings that have built-in equipment. Otherwise, when it's at the high school, middle school, wherever, we bring all of our road equipment, set it up, tape it, and then upload it at a later time.
And then there's access for townspeople to do something on cable?
Yes, so now, once we have the actual studio space, what we've been doing is reaching out to Leanne, renting out Old Town Hall upstairs, because those are the best cameras we have that are in there, and the audio is the best in there, too. So we've been just using that space to make original content. So now we'll have, we're very close to the finish line with the studio, so everything will just be done in there. And we'll have a bunch more content. That's not just meetings.
Not that there's anything wrong with.
There's nothing in it to be ignored, but it's nice to add something extra, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Little pizzazz on the channel.
And is, is, is your department the one that, like, decides what we have available to us through cable communications? Do you negotiate with who our provider is? I think we only have Comcast.
Unfortunately, you only have one.
Yeah, that's not the best.
And we just, we just negotiate soon with cable, like, a license agreement with Comcast to be able to have and maintain the PEG access, like a lot of stuff we do. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I think it's like twenty years into a ten-year contract, that the only thing, the only worries I see and the fears we have is when the next contract comes up, you know, you hear things about cord cutting, because people don't like Comcast, they wanna, you know, have, like, web apps and everything else. If that keeps up, and then the time comes to approach them for another contract, they could say, like, no, no, we don't have enough subscribers, we may, we may not want to do it this time around. It's hard to say.
They still get the Wi-Fi, though, so even if something.
Oh, yeah, they're definitely making money off Wi-Fi.
Writing the Wi-Fi.
Definitely, because without Wi-Fi, you can't do anything.
But I do actually have a question I don't know the answer to either, who does actually make those decisions on?
Like, TMLP?
If it's just Comcast, yeah, if it's just Comcast or Verizon, like, how does that process even work? Because would that affect, say, Verizon does come in, would that affect the contract we have with them that literally funds our whole department?
Good question.
I can follow up, I'm not sure of the answer, to be honest with you.
I thought, I thought Verizon was already in.
Is there in the north part of, there in the small.
I have Verizon, I have it in my house, and I'm up, like, the, you know, over on Walker Street, you know, close to that street.
All, like, where the town, right?
Yeah, I know, I think, yeah, like, over by the housing and, I don't know, Lincoln Ave has it as well, it's all from the village.
Has it, has it auctions?
Yeah.
So will it be on the areas that border Taunton?
Yeah, we tried and they, after they switched us over, and then there was no signal, they're like, oh, yeah, you don't live close enough.
Right.
Yeah, and it wasn't FiOS.
Yeah, no.
So that is a good question, because if that does ever, or I don't know how or who, what department that would go through, that would likely affect how our funding is, because we negotiated for that contract to be funded, to have staff to offer things on Channel nine. Good question.
TMLP was looking to do fiber optic and.
They are doing it.
They are doing it, so are we close to being able to?
I don't know, but that's a good suggestion, because it's half the price of Comcast.
Right.
So, and it's fiber, and it's actually a.
What's that, which, which service is it?
TMLP.
But they probably, like, when, when it's TMLP, like, on electric, and they have some kind of incentive, we can't get the incentive because it's TMLP, and they say, you're on a municipal, you're getting cheaper.
They just have to change the law to expand those incentives, though, I wanna say a year and a half ago to allow for BBS and.
So maybe those incentives that, that would be covered under TMLP when they get the fiber optic could cover the cost of what you're currently getting from Comcast, or at least pit them against each other and see who will give you more.
Together, right.
I mean, that's, that would be another road to street for them, yeah, why not?
Yeah, would they?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of kind of unexpected things to know, and it'd be, like you said, we're in our, it's our fourth year, actually, of our tenure contract we have with Comcast. Uh, so twenty-third is when that contract will end, so once, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen at that point, too. But good to, good to understand what to expect when that time comes, too.
To your point, if they come back and they say the subscribers went down because of the cord cutting, and they wanna raise the cost to the town.
Right.
Then we can say, well, there's fiber optic available. Do you guys wanna come in with your fiber optic even more and try to negotiate something there?
Right.
But it's been a one, it's been a one-horse town.
Right.
Yeah, it's so long.
Right.
So in the next six years, you guys have to get a program together that'll get picked up by Netflix.
That would really be sad.
We'll be like the new Paks in the rock.
Everyone has to have five-year plans, we gotta have five-year plans.
I know, right, we got a six-year plan now.
Well, I mean, I'd say Verizon came to the town and say, guess what, we're gonna take care of the cable company like, you know, they did before, but we really have to say.
I just.
Pause the bounce.
Dumped Comcast, basically, their prices.
It's ridiculous.
Just kept going up and up and up, and.
I dumped.
So I, I switched, I got rid of all the Comcast stuff, all, and then I hooked up with the FiOS.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so and they, they bring thin fiber right to your house. There's no coax, it's all just, there's no fiber coax and then coax the house kind of thing.
There's no coax, it's all just, there's no fiber coax and then coax the house kind of thing. And I'm, I'm got, for ninety dollars. Plus I would say, is this only if you're interested in streaming and you don't care about cable TV?
Which is what we are.
We're done.
That one part a little bit, but it's okay, we're fantastic.
So I can watch and, and you can come to. So I can get PBS for ten, for ten bucks, um, a month to PBS, the W G V H. You get streaming for all of their stuff, which is, and that's how they have a watch as PBS anyway, so, but anyway. But I was talking to the guy, he said he's not into, as, Fios does have cable TV, but they don't want to deal with Dayton or any other. They don't, because they have to, don't they have, doesn't, cable companies have to, um, pay something to the towns and?
Through project.
It's us, that's what, that's what this whole budget is, we're funded by Comcast, so we would be funded by Verizon, essentially, if we could negotiate with Verizon.
Right, and they don't want to do that because I, because, um, it's just not a good business plan for them.
Right. Right, so on everyone's, in the beginning, I was mentioning that Comcast, if you look at your bill, there's a percent, that little, it's like, uh, five?
I think it's five percent.
I think five percent is what funds this budget in the department, so that's how that money works.
Actually.
One thing you may want to think about it down the road though, is, uh, YouTube, Twitter.
Right.
All of them are doing streaming now and you can actually create your own platform and use that.
Yep.
And it's relatively speaking, I think Twitter's gonna be extremely cheap, only the way they're going forward.
Yeah, once the gears change too, um, I agree, there's definitely, things change and thankfully we do have the town day YouTube page.
Yeah.
The only thing is with that, we don't have the control of it, it's YouTube owned, we don't, it's not ours, unfortunately, at that point.
Right. Right. Well, that's why I mentioned Twitter, yeah, because Twitter is much more agreeable to.
Yeah, um, so certain websites and companies like that, we wouldn't even be the owners of it anymore, so there's that piece of it. So there's an, every year there's something new and that's why I kind of like this, um, committee. Because it's interesting to see all the different changes in technology that happens in just a year, it's crazy, um.
You thought you'd just like to come back for a second?
Oh, no. I don't like the money, so.
If I ever hear.
It's necessary, but it's a lot.
If I ever hear that a B O S meeting got exciting or something, I can always go back and watch it, I need to.
Right, and that's why we're really excited to have that option for people, because, um, that was when YouTube kind of started to get big too, so, a little bigger.
True, definitely.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's nice, and I'll see YouTube ever crashing for quite some time, it's just a good platform for people to, to catch meetings on now.
Yeah.
And if you guys ever want to see the office, it's been, uh, it's been renovated, uh, thanks to, uh, Mike helping us out, Jim Adware. It's a lot more attractive, so if someone wants to come down and really help us out, it looks like a, it, it looks like a brand-new cable office down there, it's the state of the art. We got brand-new machines and, uh, we've been blessed, you know, it's kind of nice having that, that PEG count to do that for us.
I guess we should really.
So hopefully the ever prob will come back and say, wow, I think I want to work here now, look at my hand, yeah?
We should really thank the townspeople for voting in that warrant article that allowed us to use that money to make the studio, so.
True.
And where's the, where's the studio room?
Um, downstairs of Town Hall, um, where the library, the children's library is, we have, it's a doorway to into our studio and then our office is in there too.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's two rooms there.
Or if you ever want to tour this, you know, shoot us an email or whatever and, uh?
We'll want to make a show so we can have more original content.
Guys want to do that, yeah, huh?
We might be, uh, doing a learning local show where we interview different department heads and committees and boards, so we'll probably end up reaching out at some point anyway. So we can let people know the ins and outs of each department, because it's a lot, there's a lot of different boards and committees that most people don't even know about, so.
Right.
It's kind of going to be the point of that show, so.
You know, which, you know which one would probably be one of the more popular?
Exactly.
Would be the one that plays with, uh, big trucks.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's, it's your turn now.
So is there any like, um, you know, you're gonna do some kind of a content or create, if a towns person wants to create content, does it have to stay off of, uh, political or religious or anything like that or the restrictions?
There are certain restrictions in our contract, um, and being a government channel too, um, I'm not sure where the line is. We have to look really through the contract, but there are certain things that we have, like, uh, like Meet the Candidates night, for example, um, and we did a show at the time we started. And it was a message in the beginning that said, the, the views and what, that like typical script that says, do not replace the town of Dayton.
Almost like a historical letter.
Um, so we'd have to see where the line is, um, but we do put that script in front of things that, um, are, you know, are words, for lack of better words.
I think one of the bigger projects was the library and the, uh, business spotlight, that went pretty well and, uh, we had a series on that. The historical commission is working on, uh, getting some people to do an oral, um, discussion about the past of Dayton, you know, the history of Dayton. And we've been working on that, so that should be coming in the next couple of weeks. So we, we're always looking for new ideas, it's, uh, just a little tough on us, there's only three of us, you know, a lot of us work during the day.
Yes.
But, uh, we love what we do when we come down here, you know, I think my wife's ready to just, uh, push me out of the house, why don't you just live down the town hall and I never see you anymore, so. We, we like it, you know, and we thank the townspeople for having that technology down there, so, came a long way.
Definitely.
No, thank you guys for everything that you did.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Were there any questions on the line, the budget lines?
Any questions on six ninety-eight?
Kind of, I'm right here for a minute.
Yeah.
No.
No.
Just tell Comcast to give them more money, you know?
But if we tell them that, it could be because everyone's bills, because they've eroded off the bills, so it's like that fine line where we just.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
I saw it, yeah.
Our bills are going up for a guy.
And thankfully, like I said, we have over three hundred thousand dollars in that PEG account that funds our yearly budget and, um, any of these warrant articles. So we, we have money to work with, we just want to be strategic, because we're, I work maybe five to ten hours a week for cable and that's mainly just filming meetings because those quarters live in the end, so it's too big to go, so that alone beats up time and it takes away from that planning of how are we gonna spend this money?
So we made them buy it, we made them buy it.
So it's tough not having someone there full-time to really manage all the money, but, um, we may do it when we have the time. We, we really sit down and try to plan it all out and go to the town meeting for our warrant articles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys, we appreciate it, have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we got a couple more to get through and these will be really quick. Uh, one fourteen moderator, uh, we've kept, we've kept this line at five hundred for the last, close to ten years and, uh, I'm glad that right now the budget is still at five hundred.
Well, that, that's a stipend, right?
Yeah, stipend of five hundred, right, we froze that one, we froze our stipend.
So if you would raise that, you're gonna open a big can of worms with all the other stipends.
You could, yeah, although last year the stipends did increase, except for moderator and finance committee.
I see you guys.
And fly, and two, I don't think it's like.
Well.
Okay.
Do we have the, uh, finance committee stipends?
Yeah, so on one, how much to go through these three? Was that a question?
Well, can I make a quick comment if you guys don't mind? Because I know it's not official yet, but as, you know, the potential incoming moderator, I'm, I'm just, I'm okay with the five hundred. I would love to see a stipend for some, uh, muck boots though.
For, for moderator?
Yeah, because, you know, there might be things that warrant needing muck boots.
We, we keep it clean up there on the stage.
Nah, I know you guys do, I'm just joking, thank you guys.
You better, you gotta have a receipt though.
Kevin, thank you, that made it easier.
Uh, I'm gonna just hit all three at once before, uh, asking for questions. So we got that one, one thirty-one is our, our committee stipend at the same level. Uh, travel, we cut down because nobody's used it in years, dues and subscription, um, we have M M A dues, um, that's always there. And then the last one is the reserve fund, one thirty-two, which we spent, um, about twenty thousand of that last, too many years ago, last week. Um, that's kind of the emergency, emergency pops up and, um, you know, lightning, lightning strikes Town Hall or Tom's truck fall, falls off. That falls off the lift.
Yeah.
Any questions on any, any of those three?
No. No. Mr. Roach, before we go, I've got a couple of things that I'd like to say if you would allow me the opportunity.
Sure.
First of all, this will be my last meeting and I want to thank, I've really enjoyed working with the FinCon, my three years on the board. I love this process, it can be tedious, I understand that, but going through the money, trying to hold the line for the taxpayers or something, I, I, I find fascinating and enjoy doing. The two other things, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting and I know currently we're about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference. And one area I ask that you take a look at is with the police. We have a position of a lieutenant that is vacant, has been vacant for quite some time. That is the significant savings, if it isn't. On the last note, Mr. Tidgets, it was clarity wasn't happy about the discussion about clothing allowance. And as you debate that issue, I would ask that you take a look at the clothing allowance for the building inspector, council on aging and, uh, animal control officer as well as the sewer enterprise system. I'm, I'm not advocating, but what I'm saying is when you come to a decision, take a look at what some of the others are making before you decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Any, any questions before we wrap this? Anything?
Um, I just had two thoughts, so on the moderator, those mentioned as a stipend, I think it's considered a salary, because when they're voted, it's established the salaries of elected officials along with the board of selectmen, sample, treasurer, not a big deal, that's just the way I look at it. And one thought I have, we're looking at the, um, town historian's budget, I don't think she ever takes her stipends each year. Um, so I think that's something just to take into consideration with her request, I know it's a big increase, but I don't know if she ever actually, she would, it's put in the budget, but I don't think she ever takes it from the town, so just something to keep in mind, that's all. Thanks.
Tell me anything? I want to just go on order of, of where they're placed on the screen, Jake, anything? Woody?
No, I'm good.
Well, I'm all set, you guys have a good night, thank you very much.
You all too, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, just a quick question, just in terms of process, like so we can just have a plan, uh, to look, continue moving forward. Last two weeks have been a lot, a lot to digest as well. We know, uh, we know also based, uh, based on what we heard that we saw, we're always gonna spend about the next, uh, two weeks evaluating options as well. Uh, which, you know, that, uh, timing will give all us, I think, a better ability to digest the information that we have now. How like I am actually, I am actually wondering if it could be help, be helpful, might be, uh, if there's any opportunity to have, have another, have another joint meeting before we separate, uh, uh, to make the individual recommendation, maybe like right before April school vacation, like so at least. Like as we really deal with the structural issue that we face, we might be able to come to some type of general consensus alignment about how, what options everyone might have an ability to, like, get around. So we have, I think, got together like some type of direction about how we, how we are able to balance before we go off, uh, independent. Uh, recommendations, if that makes sense at all.
So are you thinking like the eleventh?
As an option, yeah, but, I mean, I'm just one person, I just wanted to throw that idea out.
Time to work for everybody. And then as we, you're good. Good.
What's the date again?
About eleventh, two weeks from today.
Why is it already on my schedule?
So the same.
Serendipitous.
So is it, um, what, what is, what do they call this, uh, next one? What's the definition of, of what we'll be doing?
Uh, kind of, like.
Joint meeting between.
Yeah, just, probably a, a, close to final joint meeting with the.
Dealing with the, um.
Where we are and, and kind of some, some options on what, how we're gonna get there.
Okay, so, and, um, six o'clock, same, same place yet, or what?
Yeah, I mean, like I do think like the six o'clock timing works, like I do know we're very, we've been, uh, very meeting heavy lately. Um, and I will have to confirm the location, just because it's highly, I don't have that, uh, schedule in front of me right now.
Okay, so, yeah, time and location to be determined.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mike, I kind of assumed that, I think similar to last year, we kind of had a, when we got closer to the end, we had the, um, selectman recommendations.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll have warrants at that point too and.
Yes, and one of the things I think we learned last year is to have the, to have the, to have the warrant articles that are approved to be on the warrant
Yeah.
actually done in advance of that last joint meeting, because, yeah, like that process last year was a little clunky.
Yeah.
So we just want to improve that.
Yeah, right, because you have to, board of selectmen aren't gonna put an article on, we don't want to spend any time on it.
Ex- exactly.
Um, okay, yeah, anything else? You guys?
Does anybody have any questions about the other documents that were in the packet today? There was just a couple of other things that.
On the back, in the back?
We didn't really discuss, um, and Mikey, I'm not sure of the word.
Yeah, they were all the way at the back of the package.
Revenue.
The fund bonuses.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so the fund is general fund revenues that compares where we landed on end of a quarter twenty-three, what we projected for twenty-four, where we weren't halfway through this year, and what we're estimating for twenty-five. We just wanted to show some available funds that we have on reserve. Um, as Mr. Hulson, the budget overview does show negative about two hundred and fifty thousand, and I think that's all the docs.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Can we do that? The ambulance receipts and revenue, they stay in the ambulance fund?
Yes.
Yeah, so let's say appropriate out of it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, just making sure on that one. Okay, I make a motion, we vote for adjourn.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Post, you guys have it?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I, we're adjourned as well.
Time is now eight forty-eight.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.